Alrighty so I guess I am live right now Let's see, I'll be waiting for some more people to join in Good morning if anyone is watching or anybody is watching at all, there's two people now I'll wait till about like maybe four or five people join in like the next one or two minutes and then I'll kinda uh whatchamacallit Oh snap, y'all guys are coming through fast, okay so we got four people Um, I'll just wait till like, okay we got six now, okay y'all guys are crazy because I wasn't expecting that, alright so I think you know, um let me see I'll wait till about maybe seven or eight more or at least eight more people to come in And then I could kinda give a rundown on what I'm doing today And just start from there, so good morning guys, hope everyone is doing okay, happy Sunday, um If you, tell me how my audio sounds before I like start, stream is looking good? Alright, cool, 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 yeah y'all guys are coming in fast, holy hell, alright so I think we got a good amount of people, so right now I'll be um trying to debug a space Plus as well, I'll be trying to fix up some screen links At the moment, uh for another scene for Pixel Junk, so right now, um As you can see here, I'm in the playground and this will be in the next uh update patch For client version 1.22, um all of the posters you see here Is basically a one-to-one, so I was kinda doing this off the grid Or basically not on livestream, and you can see here, I fixed all of the original playground posters In its like exact format, so you can see here, if you guys ever been to the playground Um y'all probably remember the original posters, so that will be um in the next client itself And um, yeah that's basically it for the playground, I just wanted to show you guys that Um you know, just from the beginning, but um, just to kinda show you guys here, if I open up another tab In YouTube real quick, and Just to see like, or just to kinda showcase to you guys, um I just type in the playground really quick You could kinda see like, it is literally a one-to-one finish or finish of it Okay yeah, this is, this is a video I actually used to reference this while I tried rebuilding, um I'm trying to find the spot where this user basically, um whatchamacallit And if you guys wanna answer any questions or ask me any questions, you can, so hold on, I'm just trying to show on my end So yeah, as you can see here, if you come kinda compare and contrast, like let me open up OBS for a second, alright so You probably will see my full screen now, so You can see here on the screen how that compares versus um how I have the space, like I literally spent A lot of time trying to get the original posters from people's cache data, so I could kinda store the originality to this space itself So, yeah But let me uh get off of this segment of OBS and try to drag this back real quick Okay, so right now What I plan on doing is showing or showcasing to you guys, I'm doing this in live time, and um Sodium is broken, uh what sodium, cuz we have like multiple spaces, define broken Playstation Home is basically a, well it was a social world back on the Playstation 3 And it's now defunct, but I worked with a team to you know, helping out search of restoring its online client As well as you know, archiving as much data, but Playstation Home is kinda like a social world that was like You could talk to other people across the world back on a PS3 But um I'll showcase this space we're gonna be working on today, or basically what I'm gonna be doing for most of this livestream Um one of my team members told me that one of the uh servers were live Via for uh the Pixel Junk space in terms of Like screen links and stuff, so I was like, oh cool, we can actually get original content, but this is the space we're working on, Pixel Junk Exhibition? Um, it's not really like Minecraft, I wouldn't say, because you're really not building, wait, are you saying Playstation Home is coming back as a mod? Well, basically for Playstation Home, I'm working on the online client, basically Um to give y'all guys kind of a little insight, I've been working more on the side of Whatchamacallit I've been working more on the side of the um online client rather than offline, that's like my first time touching offline in a minute, but We've been basically our team since like the past, well that's the major goal of this project anyway But uh the main focus after I was done with like the major core updates to the offline client, I've been working on uh The stuff via for Pixel Junk, I mean not for Pixel Junk, but for the online server Mini games and missing items, alright, you could DM me after that and I could probably see Whatchamacallit, cuz I know certain mini games may not work with Sodium, but the ones that I placed in that did work should work fine But yeah, we're gonna actually get these spaces fixed, but to be honest, what is really weirding me out right now is I'm not too sure why Um, the videos are working, did I, I'm not too sure if I actually set this up Let me see something for a second, because I'm gonna go back on my PC and I don't recall, yeah, let me see This is kinda interesting, because I don't recall me um ever doing the client itself for the videos So I'm really not too sure why the videos is working at the moment for the space, like It's actually weirding me out, cuz I haven't done this at all So I don't know how it's actually playing any of this But I'm, I'm kinda going to investigate that now, so Let me see, PJ Museum, if not, um Let me see, PJ Museum, Screen Content, yeah, there's nothing in Screen Content for any of this to run So I'm not too sure if like this thing is embedded, let me check logs real quick, because that will kinda give me a better Like overview on where I can work at, so This is weird Cuz I never added anything via for the video itself, maybe I did this way back, but I don't even see it like in the logs Where it's stating I've worked on this at all, cuz what I was doing Um, the other day, like if I go back onto here, if you guys see on the side of the screen, this Pixel Junk website Basically had its content, like if you see here, if I type in this link Alright, let me pause that for a second, and I try to download this, you can see here, it's downloading from the server and that's why I was trying to Collect all of its original data Uh the Playstation Home version I'm running right now Is for, well it was basically only for Devkits, but if you have like a debug system or like a some, something on Dex you can But if you have like an actual reference tool like I do, like an actual dev kit, you could also run this just fine, or you can use RPGS3 But um, this is kinda odd, like I don't really recall me fixing this up, maybe I just really don't recall But I don't really remember me uh adding A video here at all So that's weird, um, let's see, in the meantime, I guess we're gonna be changing uh Let me just see something actually I'm going to, let me see, yeah even the pictures are the same from the server Well, what I can do is I guess get this archived later on, but it's just good to know That uh the link worked for this space, what I can do now is try to maybe fix another space in real time or do something else Because I wasn't expecting uh that to be fixed, I should've checked before uh doing this livestream, but yeah We can do, I was trying to do SEJ Mall, but I've been having like a ton of issues with that as well Like certain spaces are not working with me I'm trying to see here, where's the Japanese mall, okay yeah, I've been trying to like fix the Japanese mall Also, when you think Playstation Home, will you be available on Kex and Hen or not possible? Ah yeah, my reference tool, uh yeah, anytime I turn on the my development kit, it sounds like Like a turbo machine or just like a fighter jet, but um in terms of Kex and Hen The online client will definitely be fine for Kex and Hen systems, like you could run a retail build via on Hen and Kex Like I've already personally tested that per se, but um, as well of course Dex systems will be just fine But um, once the Japanese market loads up What I plan doing is trying to get original Japanese posters posted up in the space, so far As you can see here, I have like the original GDC Home uh intro playing in the mall But um I haven't got that much far since I've been working on uh other stuff in the actual um Online server side of things, but um What I'll do is I'll kinda show you what I've been uh working with on the side, so let me go to OBS Not too sure why that's too long, alright so I'll kinda make this a little bit larger so you guys can see, so I'm taking off my home right now, but um I'll kinda show you the folder where I've been trying to work at, so let me just find it I made a custom one the other day, alright so Right here, this folder has a bunch of original Japanese posters and I spent like, I don't even know, like probably Two to three weeks trying to find original Japanese home posters by like data mining online Looking through people's caches data, but all of these posters came from uh originally from Japan home So basically, this is all original content that will be definitely in the um, whatchamacallit Like in the actual marketplace for Japan or the Japanese mall, so what I plan on doing is trying to add all of these posters Um from the work I've done before, and then we're going to just kind of uh work from there, so that's what I plan on doing Alright, so right now, let me just go back And I'll kinda toggle this real quick So, the thing is about this space itself, um, whatchamacallit The thing about this space itself, like it's not really easily mapped, so I have to kind of like Do a guessing game and try to figure out like each location to a poster, and it's like really annoying, so First thing I need to do is figure out the um Whatchamacallit, the dot scene itself and then work on from that, so here's the Japanese dot scene And this is where I need to work from Let me see Alright, so these are the two spaces I was working at, so according to this, Screen 18 Was um I'll show you on the console, this is Screen 18 right here, the one that's playing the actual video itself What I wanna do as well is do a tool toggle system thing, so like after uh the original home video plays I do wanna add another video, so In this directory right here, in Test Video, I think what I need to do is open up another tab And then I'll just work from there, hold on I need to Japanese Marketplace Alright, so I wanna add these two test videos and like toggle it, like Maybe twice, so after the home video will play LBP and after that I'll play like another video But I'm not too sure if it will mess up on memory, but we'll find out like very soon So what I'm gonna do is go to my Test Video folder right here, I just like to add them And I'm going to add like the Japanese Little Big Planet picture or the video and then we're gonna add LPB4, so Since they're already in that location and already had them like pre-downloaded, I'm adding the sources right here The video codex should be fine, since I think I tested this out on other spaces, but some spaces has like issues Alright, so me doing that shouldn't like have a major issue, and let me just delete this source file And I'm going to add this to Images, hopefully I could get this fully done today Or somewhat done, and then I could probably come out with a patch, but more than likely Um another thing what I gotta test today is Local Motions and we could do that Ah ha, nice Dex Hen, I don't think Dex Hen is possible, because Dex is like for development from where Hen is just like It's a tethered exploit, so it's like the Playstation Vita's Hankaku, or it's like one of those older uh PSPs exploits So what I'm gonna do here guys, in the background process, I'mma leave the video right here So, I'mma leave the video right here and I'mma just kinda toggle back on the screen Hopefully, y'all guys could help me out with this as I try to multitask, you could tell me after the Playstation Home video If you guys see the Little Big Planet video as well as you guys may see The um local Roko video I would have playing, so I'mma just leave that on the screen here, while I try to like Look back and forth on a PC for other content, cuz I gotta dissect the dot scene, so I'll kinda look on the screen back and forth, but hopefully, um, yeah So according to this, this says Marketplace Estate Screen 1 I don't know, that's not I don't know if that's the correct one Everything else is like, Market Place Poster Poster Screen ID, Marketplace Poster 12A I don't even know what this one is, it's a video screen type, okay, Poster Channel See this is the thing, it's like I'm playing a guessing game and I really don't know which is which, so Alright I know all of my content is in that uh one folder right here Oh, so the Little Big Planet video, oh no, that ain't, that is not the Little Big Planet video, it was just showing it, I thought it was for a second, I almost got excited So, just wanna make sure Alright, I think that video is done Or no, it's not, what the hell? Alright, so Japan Marketplace, and I'm gonna try to do a test image, so we could do Black Rock Shooter I like that anime, so why not, we can have that, I don't know where the source location to that photo is going It doesn't really explain to me Ah, and I know that if it's a 12A poster, that is probably gonna get Let me just cut this off That does look like the Little Big Planet video, so I'm happy that it's working and it's toggling just fine Let me see for a second, back in the livestream, hey what's up Bloodsipper? Thank you guys for joining the livestream, so the Little Big Planet video is playing just fine The audio is working as well, the reason why I'm not getting too close with the audio, so I don't, I don't wanna get copyright claimed and having to like re-edit this video Cuz YouTube is just like that But um, what I'm going to try to test out now is um Trying to figure out which screen link is which, so I'm just trying to cut out some stuff, alright, so that should be fine Okay, so I'm just waiting for the next video to play and then I'm gonna reload the scene, but Just trying to figure out which screen is which, so Market Poster 1A? I don't, that's very weird, why would it start with that poster 12 and not start with 1? Alright, well, that's okay, I could kinda just copy the code and keep on going down the list We can uh try another picture real quick Um, we could do the candy eye picture, why not? Alright, so Alright, and then after this video runs, let's see, Sony Computer Entertainment, Japan Studio I think Japan Studio made local Roko, yeah that looks like local Roko, alright, so that video is good, so I'm pretty happy about that Now it's time to see if our posters are working, cuz I could never get them working um in unison Hey, now I can tell the PKG of PS3 personalization, uh in terms of what? Hey man, I'm playing through one of the hardest dungeons in Final Fantasy 15, yo that's what's up, I haven't even finished Final Fantasy 15 I'm not even too sure I'm even at, the last time I played was like back in 2017 But uh Final Fantasy 15 is a beautiful game and Ice Wallow comb, ay what's up man? Thank you guys for joining the livestream, thank you guys for the likes and thank you guys for, you know, y'all joining in, um cuz I know I do these randomly Alright, but the goal is to see where the hell if the posters are popping up And I don't see any of the posters working, and this has always been an issue with this space Like the videos are fine, it's just like the poster screen ID Isn't like showing up for whatever reason This is on the Playstation 3 That I'm uh showing this at I'm using uh just my debug or Dex Playstation 3, but um This is originally, yeah you can see here if I uh toggle this that I'm on So, this is odd and this is what I didn't want to happen It's just so weird that uh None of the pictures are ever showing up for this space, and I really wanted to fix them all Okay, so What I want to do is maybe dissect this, this may take a little bit, but I'm willing to try to figure this out, so Let, let's just use the source root of this, we know Screen 18 works, right, like I know Screen 18 works, so what I'm gonna do is try to find it, boom, ah hold on, hold on, hold on Maybe it doesn't like that name, so Marketplace 12 is just like maybe the code name to it? So like Poster 154 maybe it? Maybe that's why, and then Poster 1A? I'll just cancel out of uh this one Uh the Pixel Junk, cuz I don't wanna work into this, so Poster Channel 132 is the screen ID Alright, hopefully maybe, you know, praying that this will work We'll just reload the space and maybe that was the issue I think I remember your name, uh DLG I think you was a Frosty back on home, I just remember your ID Cuz DLG kinda rings a bell to me Yeah, I know what IGA was, uh this dude Mickmar used to sell it Alright, so So, ah okay, so there's some, there's some progress guys You can see here, we got one poster, so one poster is actually working, now We at least know So we got at least one poster working, but I want something maybe centralized in a location of like a poster So like I want like clothing maybe on the bottom floor, right, for example, and I may want uh like The stuff, or like this stuff just be like, I don't know, like furniture or whatever, cuz I guess that's where you would buy it from But um, we gotta find the other poster, I'm so confused I don't even know where the other poster is at, what the hell? See this may be a difficult task of like debugging and trying to find, and then I gotta see if memory is okay, okay, memory looks alright Bruh, I don't even know where the other one is, okay, but we got one poster working, oh no, there it go, there it go Okay, so this poster goes down here, alright, so we could kinda do this, my question is, where is this supposed to run? PC, PS3, if it's a PS3, you have to have a jailbroken one, alright, so Basically how I'm running this is with Prodigy Target Manager, which is a debug or debugging tool On the PC as well as a jailbroken Playstation 3 that's on Dex, so if you see here, um You can see that I'm on a Playstation 3 that is on Dex right now But um, I also have like a debug unit, so but you could see here that you could do that Hey Blizzle, Blizzle Can you go online in a jailbroken Playstation 3? Yeah, but you may risk a ban, um, but there's things where you could do to minimize that So, at least we know we got two posters working right now, so I'm pretty happy that we got that What I wanna do is possibly switch these posters and have like something for Let me see, is there like an estate section of this? Yes, there is, I don't wanna use that, I wanna use something that's like furniture oriented, um I don't know if we have furniture Alright, yeah, we could do like this poster right here, and we could just turn this into the penthouse furniture one So the top stairs will have that one, we could do like a tool toggle of it Oh, I ain't trying to open up Discord right now, so the penthouse furniture, they could get its own section, and maybe, I don't know Trying to see what else could be fitting, yeah, this looks more like, I don't know, furniture or bed related and it's Japanese, so why the hell not, um So, we can, I'mma add some of the code right here and then I'm just going to replace it out So Jeezy Sukamasso, alrighty Alright, and then I'm gonna try to find another poster that I archived, and possibly we can utilize that And for the online client, if not, I could do some uh digging for some cache data and we could uh utilize that But uh the RavenMain.jpg thing, we could put that there Alrighty, boom, so that's that one, and then Let me make another line, so we could do a two toggle screen, and then we could work around just from that, and we're just gonna kinda guess and Work around like manually, since I'm, I'm basically scripting in live time, alright, so Let me see, um, I don't wanna wait Alright, this vendor machine looks pretty good, we could use that, and I don't think all of these are like kinda low resolution, and they're already like they came from the server itself so they kinda process in a way where I don't think it would have any memory issues so what I'm gonna do is save now I'm gonna reload the market and then we're gonna just go around the whole space itself thank you guys the 20 people who are watching and you know leaving likes I really do appreciate that I'm not too even sure how long I'm a live stream today um depending I may just you know get this marketplace done since clearly I did pixel junk somehow I really don't remember me doing that and I usually have a great memory um so right now alright the movies are still running fine let's see if the furniture and like the stuff is toggling okay cool so those two posters are working and the bottom one is working alright so we could kinda work for there so we got those two done now I have to look manually at this like code right here like and I have to kinda dissect this so according to this well I don't wanna use poster 1B it says marketplace poster 1B but I'm assuming that is a poster behind the actual poster itself or the board like I think one like A is the front of the poster I'm assuming so like this will be A and then the back of the poster will be whatever it's B is which is I don't know I mean I mean I guess we could add one right here but let's see what posters which first and then we can uh delegate on what we can do so what I'm gonna do is create another screen link and I'm just gonna make the XML file like hella long I'm gonna give it like 107 lines and then I could kinda just work from there so so it's saying poster 133 and then what I'm uh hold on let me take that line of code out I'm gonna make sure we're just gonna test what screen is this one and then just work from there cuz I like to work work in small bits and then just compile up cuz if you work like if you go too far ahead sometimes working on home um you could run into like issues but yeah if you guys are whatchamacallit oh is PlayStation home coming back yeah I worked with an online uh restoration team and our goal is to restore the online client DLG what I can do for you real quick is I can send you a quick invitation to our server and by the way DLG if you happen to have like any old home files whether it be like I don't know IGA spaces clothing items you could donate to the project and we could restore all of those items back into the home offline client but mainly for the online client but um if you want the official link to this uh here you could join our discord server but um with that being all out the way let me see we gotta figure out where the hell is it I'm getting confused okay but that's weird where the hell is the other one? oh okay so alright so actually poster B wasn't that poster it was this one at the bottom so maybe it was a good thing that we did check that I don't even know what I wanna post uh post on poster B I do wanna be a moderate with the um actual uh basically the stuff for it or like the memory and the thing but um I think the thing space would have uh like little stuff we can add this here I may do some uh data mining in a second which maybe I should do in another tab alrighty but I'm gonna reload the space again but I'm going to try to data mine here in a quick second I have to look alright let me look alright so let me see here alright I know this person who donated data to us definitely been in Japan home so I'm hoping that I find some like Japanese data or like posters and stuff if not um hold on let me check the video section cuz for some reason posters like being in there alright there is a ton of Japanese posters we can work with but I'm trying to get like one from not like actual like I want like actually the what's the word? that will be from the server itself or that would seem like it would come from like the stores alright we got some right here ooh music cafes that's pretty nice we could kinda work with this I'm just trying to get an idea of um alright wait I know this is from like Toro's Lounge alrighty I could work with that if I run out with pictures but let's see if okay our little big planted dude looking fresh right here and then on the back end I got that so those two posters are fine um right here let's see the next one alright so poster 134 don't even know let me see what I could do now maybe to speed up the process just a little bit I'm going to just have the poster ID names cuz at least I figured it out because I swear to you guys before I wasn't live streaming I wasn't able to even get this fixed so I'm kinda happy that I did get this fixed alright so that's like four lines of code but let me see oh nah I don't wanna mess up alright so boom I don't even know which posters I'm gonna post yet so I'm just kinda doing placeholders and then I'm gonna work from there so this is 135 135 or 136 and then next one will be uh 137 alright so I'm going to just put random photo uh excuse me photos just in random places and we're gonna just work from there so I'm gonna like put this tank top one right here uh we could do the Miku one somewhere alright so that's Miku Hanabari 2010 I may do some data mining maybe later on to change the photos but this is just getting the placements like I really don't care in terms of like where stuff is at exactly yeah we could do my own uh own pics and ads uh in terms of ads and stuff the way how our project works we're kind of like non-funded and we don't accept any donations other than data um due to like legal reasons as well as just a preference of our team like we're not doing this for money this is literally we're doing this um just out of our sheer love of home and we're even though it would be quote unquote nice to get money from this I me personally I you know spend most of my time or my free time I should say on working on PlayStation home behind the scenes and like that yeah people made like some companies made like over seven figure salaries back on home like they were making bank bro like End Dreams and Lockwood they were making some serious cash alrighty so we kinda have um alrighty so right here we can uh add some posters so that's estates oh the audio died I probably kicked my uh microphone for a second cuz of my legs are moving but um I'm gonna add some estate posters what guy how much did you guys hear and I could probably repeat it alright so we could add the log cabin um alright so we're gonna move this one log cabin we could do like a tool toggle screen I think I want like both sides to be alright and then that will be penthouse wait the tank top um let me see Hanabari jeezy lagoon I'm gonna move that one okay I felt like trying to data mine for some more pictures but that may take a lot of time cuz it it took me a lot of time for that oh about um whatchamacallit about ads oh yeah but in terms of ads and stuff most likely we're not doing that oh the discord link for the server um let me scroll back up in the chat what you guys can do if you like I always told this and like my live streams and like people know me that I always always ask um if you happen to have any PlayStation home data or if you know anybody with PlayStation home data this is what is making it possible for me to uh work on the client in live time so all of this data gives me um you know work for the team or basically it gives me an opportunity to restore um you know official content like this and I could give it back basically to you guys and like nice and neat package plus I'll tell you this a little bit all of the work that I kinda do in offline it really really does help for the online client for example um these screen links for like the space right here right what I could do is basically on the online service when that comes out for you know the end user um in terms of the backend I can basically port all of my work and just upload it or it's not that simple but you kinda get what I'm saying like for example if I want like an online client if I literally want this poster for to be everyone um I could just literally import the work that I'm working on the Core 2.0 client and then I could work from there yeah if you have a PlayStation 3 with home data there's a way you could donate data and in the discord channel um there is a channel excuse me hold on I want to go get some water real quick or pull my water to the side but um you could do that in terms of shark I think that will be really hard and probably difficult to do because the encryption type on it I think it it requires like a key like it may be a very very long time or a while to crack shark but yeah cracking shark uh would be really cool for the um just the end user and we will have like a lot of more spaces and we will have like 60,000 items just from John Drink Waters uh like his whole math archive alone but um back to the mainstream real quick we're gonna go back onto the PC and I'm gonna figure out these poster links so I'm gonna delete these alright so alright so we stopped at scene 136 I believe or 137 excuse me so I guess these go in numerical order so 138 okay so 138 and 139 is a thing so so 138 and then 139 another screen is called I think it was like 143 I think so 143 then what's next 143 and then 153 143 and then let me see something 153 alrighty so 143 153 and where was the last thing I did Hanabari alright so for the next four spaces or screens we're just gonna add some uh just template uh posters escape virus alright so escape virus I'm just trying to add like dummy pictures and then I could kinda place what I want after it's just the easiest way on how to do this just to know that the screen links are actually working because I had a manually I'm manually doing this from like scratch like usually there will be like pre-made code and it will just be way more easier but I'm have to toggle back and forth and kinda decipher like the positioning oh yeah I forgot after the joining the discord but I don't have data but my friend probably does I asked the other tutorial uh yeah there is an actual tutorial that I made for it and here is it I will link you right now so there's an actual guide for this so this guide actually shows you on how to extract your data but let's say if you need a hack your PlayStation 3 first you could go ahead and check out this link and I did another video on basically how to mod your console both are very fairly easy to do and it's like usually it doesn't take more than like I don't know an hour to modify your system but dumping depends on how much data you have alright so we have the pick of arts uh gaming poster right here this looks like it would be for furniture this space right here or this at least this thing I should put like a furniture poster but where the hell the other ones are at did I not save? uh if you ha- happen to have data already on your PlayStation 3 hen system and you wanna donate yeah go ahead um hen is great for dumping because if you already wanna modify system all you need is multi-man and like the video I just sent the first one will show you exactly on how to dump it like you just go in dev underscore ECD zero then inside that folder go to another video uh folder called game and then you'll wanna find a folder called I'll type it in actually MPI 005 that is basically um the retail version of home so that's that but I'm trying to find where the hell the other posters are at did I not do this correctly? I really don't know, cuz I see one poster, but the other two are not showing up. Wait, wait, wait. The Lagoon one showed, okay. Wait. Sukamasu? I don't know. Then I had another folder called GZLagoon07. Okay, so one of them did show up. So we know GZLagoon07 is uh this one behind here. Uh, we could kinda leave that one right there, I don't mind it. We could do uh GZLagoon08, but I don't know where that one is located. I do not, okay, so, the thing is, I need to figure out which corresponds with which. So 143, that's 6B, so let me kind of like think about this. Let me do 6A and see if that pops up. Alright, so 6A. Hold on. See, you see how like the thing jumps around? This is why I don't like, ugh, this is gonna be a pain. Alright, so 142 is that screen. I gotta figure this out for a second, so it's 142. So it's kinda like I have to guess and decipher on how to map this correctly. And let me check memory stats, alright, memory looks okay. Which is good, cuz I don't wanna add too many posters and then have to go back and retract stuff due to uh like memories issues. But I'm gonna try to get these two posters up on the screen now, so, I don't even need to copy that one. Alright, so, let's reload. Yeah, usually uh most people who go on Hen, but yeah, if you really do have um data, if you're R in our Discord, you could contact me after this livestream, or you could DM me. Like, um, if you click on staff chat, you could just DM me, and if you need help on like donating your data, if you happen to have it, um, you could just either send me the data, or you could just post it in the file sharing section in our channel. And then we could archive that. Okay, this is so weird. Alright, so that poster ain't that one. I really wanted Hatsune Miku right here. Oh, so if you're not in the Discord, go ahead and join, cuz this is where you could get the latest updates on the online, uh basically. Like in terms of online news of the client, um, what you might call it. Yeah, but here's the official Discord, bro. So, let me add Miku. But yeah, I highly recommend joining the Discord cuz you could figure out when we have update patches for like the offline client, you could just know the general news and like kind of um, how things are operating in the server. But thank you guys for, you know, watching and staying tuned for this uh livestream. My goal probably, since I may be a little bit busy today, is just getting done with the Japanese mall. I may do some stuff off-screen later on, cuz I did uh release a client where it has no clothing cuz I know people were requesting that, so they could add their own uh clothing. But yeah, we got our girl Hatsune Miku right there. But um, I want the other poster beside her to be the Black Rock Shooter one, but I don't know which one that is, but nevertheless, we're gonna figure that out today somehow. I'm, I'mma figure it out because, that's weird. So, 6A, what is this? Poster channel 155. Poster channel 155, okay. We're going to uh try to figure out this channel. I don't even know where this one is going, but... Dasegya, or Daseja, or however you pronounce it, hopefully that will pop up. Cool Destination Home, always need ProDG Target Manager? For the offline client, more than likely yes, but for online, uh no. The, the goal to online is basically just restoring the retail client, so you won't need um basically a, you know, a jailbroken console, or something that's connected to the PC all the time. Um, all you would need to do is probably just install Home in some shape or form. Nothing set in, set in stone, excuse me, but um, just like launch Home like you would if it was back online in like 2010 and stuff like that. What, okay, so that is that back picture, that's actually fine, I don't mind it. So, we got that photo. Screen channel 18, wait, 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 I do know screen channel 18, that's uh... Screen channel 18 is the main one, we're not messing with that, that's already fixed. Okay, so, wow. So I gotta kinda... Poster 150? Throw you. Okay, so I see what I have to do. I don't even know what this one is, but we gotta switch it. Alright, so... Alright, so that's done. Oh, thanks for that. Yeah, if you guys know anybody who played PlayStation home, feel free to let them, you know, check out our server. Um, you know, let them know about the project because the more awareness we get, not only we could gain more data that way, we just could get more recognize, or recognition for, you know, just the progress of Home. Alright, so... Where is... Nordic Sweater, trying to find where the hell that would be. I don't even know where is the stuff, ah, Nordic Sweater. So the Nordic Sweater is right here. I wanted that maybe at the bottom. Trying to see. I want really... Okay, so, we know 150, it's 146, let me see. I gotta kind of see which ones we done already, so... Alright, so 146 is not popping up. What I'm gonna do now is... Alright, so, I got that done. I'm just trying to place like stuff in random spots and then I could rearrange them. Cuz that's the best way on how to do this. Oh really? That's cool, yeah. Yeah, the more people are like, if you guys ever like have old data, or if you guys find something that we don't, the more stuff, trust me, will be better for you guys in the end. Alright, so... Neon.jpg. Alright, so that is the thread section. What I'm gonna do is switch this out, so I'mma have like... I'mma actually double toggle this one, and I'mma put a... I'mma make sense, this one has like the clothing, or it's neon. I'mma put neon.jpg here, and I'm gonna find another clothing item. Alright, so... Just wanna see how that is running. But yeah, um, data firm PlayStation 4 is going to work. Um, I'm not too sure about like, well, Home wouldn't be on PlayStation 4 at all, unless you meant PlayStation 3. But yeah, if you guys have any questions, let me know, because uh that's why I do these live streams for you guys to kinda like get a one-on-one talk with me. Frosty her. Alright, so... Alrighty. Yo, what's up, what's up, what's up? Thank you, thank you for joining. Alrighty, let me see. I just feel like changing my outfit, I do this sometimes on Home, like, I don't know, I get bored of like one outfit. Alright, but um... So what I'm gonna do here is, attempt to find the back screen of this one cuz we could put maybe one poster, but I don't know, like I'm playing a guessing game right now. How has long has this been in the works? Uh, well, the 2.0 client, I kinda started, or 1.86, I started last month, but working with this project personally, um, it's almost been about a year. Where we're gonna get that new mod for PlayStation 4, uh 6.72? I'm not too sure in terms of like ETAs, however the Colonel Exploit did uh drop. This looks awesome, what is that running right now? Uh, what you think running? What I'm playing right now, this is PlayStation Home, uh but if you're talking about this, um, it's just the videos I'm restoring and just like posters right now. Yeah, I do remember Ice and ISC back from Home. That was like one of the major exploits to get clothing. Alright, but what I'm gonna do is, is try to figure out the other stuff, so... 148, the hell is this? Alright, that's not even popping up, so 148 gotta be something special. Let me... Gonna just quickly find a poster, oh, that's not even in the right section, though. I don't even know which poster I should do, because I'm about to go data mining in a second. Oh no, actually keep that there. Oh, and let me check the poster upstairs, uh, where is it at? It should be back here, oh yeah, so, yeah, that's good. But uh, I saved that. Oh cool, it's PlayStation Home uprunning. Uh, this is using a debug client, but our team, or the Destination Home Preservation Team, is um working on the online client as well, which is the primary focus. And that's where I've been currently shifting my focus on. Um, cuz the offline client really wasn't supposed to be um like the major project, however um... I've been, I was like the main developer, you know, the person I should say, just working on the offline client just for like the community, but my main focus now, since I haven't really did an update patch in like maybe a week or so, since I released like, like almost every day I was releasing a patch and then I did like a core client. But um, I decided I had some free time today to kinda show you guys, I was like, why not? Um, since I'm gonna be working on this, why not I livestream this for, you know, the public and they could kinda see um my workflow while doing this? Alright, so this is the furniture shop right here. I'm going to change this poster to like a furniture demon one, because uh, I don't know, I think it fits the tone better. Bruh, alright, so we got the cherry blossoms. Alright, so... I may do like a tool toggle screen with this one. So, I'll actually uh give it a, so, let me check memory though, memory's fine. I'm assuming they allocated and like enough memory in this space since there were probably constant people in mad like in-game advertisements, I should say. I don't know if I got... More furniture? I don't know, I may actually go data mining in a second, cuz I really want more like unique content, for sure. Um, but uh, that will do for now. I'll just leave that uh line of code for placement, but um, in the meantime, we're gonna reload this space once again, and then I'm gonna see what other stuff we're missing. So, 148, I think 141. Alright, we didn't have 141 either. Alright, so if I go upstairs with the camera real quick. Nah, should be. Alright, so that looks fine. I may actually uh go do some data mining real quick and let me relaunch the space again because I did add another poster. Uh, the upper arena? Yeah. How will clothes stores work in home online? So right now, um that is a goal that we're trying to work on itself. Running online with clothing, I could just talk this wouldn't be hard like manually, but um stores. We're still looking into that as of right right now. But um, I could just tell you this. In terms of custom clothing online, um it wouldn't be hard at all. Like it it's kind of mad easy on how to to like implement clothing and inject it into the servers. I can't say too much because you know uh of development reasons, but uh I can say clothing, just if you wanna hear my word on it, uh clothing isn't hard to implement on online at all. Like basically if we did it online, uh we could do it on online. That's all I will say because I don't wanna say too much, but Oh, Blackrock shooter. Alright, this poster right here. Alright, so this one, we actually could know. I wanted that one over there. Damn it. So that poster goes to there. Um, okay. I wanted like I don't know. Alright, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm going to uh if you guys wanna see some spaces, let me know now because I'm gonna be doing data mining on the side. And I'm gonna be trying to find original content and Japanese posters by remembering some old Japanese links, but y'all guys tell me what spaces you wanna see. I mean, we got, I have in this client 299 spaces. So if you wanna see the playground again, or if you wanna see uproar or whatchamacallit, let me know. Yeah, y'all guys tell me what spaces you wanna see and in the background I'll be trying to uh let me see. Let me A point system based on playing the game would be fun, but wait to hold on. But it would be interesting way to make or to make this stuff. Hey, can you make a feature like Sims called custom content? Uh, the hub? Yeah, I do have the hub. One second, I got you. We actually have two hubs. What do you mean by that uh blood sipper? But yeah, I'm going to the hub real quick. Cause I'm gonna be trying to data mine on the side. Uh, but oh, but yes, what you were saying in terms of like custom content, what we do planning on for like the online side of things, once like online is in a really good state, we probably will ask people if like, you know, their 3D modelers or if like, you know, they wanna create custom content and they go under like a QA process. You can, you know, submit your content to us. We'll test it out. Uh, we'll make sure it works on everything in terms of like the online side first and I guess possibly offline as well. But um whatchamacallit. But yeah, what we wanna do for the online client itself um is basically kind of repurpose it. So not only we wanna have like originality and restore uh, you know, how home was back in the day, but we wanna go ahead and restore kind of, or not really restore, but give home a new type of meaning. Does anyone still work on the PlayStation 3? In terms of development? Yeah, I still do. But yeah, here's the hub. And my other client or my test one, I fixed the music. Fun fact, the way how the music played in the hub, there's like a secret, um whatchamacallit. Under the ground is a video screen. Like this is the actual video screen under here. Like this line is a clear video screen. Like it's just translucent. But this is how the music plays in the hub. But yeah, my other client I was working on was trying to fix posters and stuff in uh the hub. But y'all guys let me know real quick. I'm just waiting for this website to pop up because eat. Cause I'm trying to get some posters, man. Winter coordination. Let's see. Open a new tab. Just trying to find like original posters and it's kind of hard to do this, especially back in the time or trying to look at old stuff from the client. Okay, I'm just trying to read. Let me see. Yeah, these are cool posters we could implement because this website is actually down the one I'm trying to locate on right now. So actually, let me save this into the correct space. I put that on my desktop. I need to find it really quickly. Alright, so C drive and don't worry. I'm gonna read back into the chat really quickly. I'm just trying to uh gain some more data and then uh work from there. Alright, so environment. There's so many folders I have to like Japan, home. Wait, what? Oh, this is the wrong. This is the wrong client. I was about to put this in another folder and now I noticed it wasn't even there. I'm trying to find the folder called Japan marketplace really quickly. I just ran through it. Alright, so wait. Alright. This, we can uh Let me read back into the chat really quick. Let me close out some tabs as well. Oh snap, everybody uh is talking right now. Oh yeah, that's what's up. I was able to change the music. Yeah, you could do that with SDNS. Um, so what I meant was by playing the mini games, you get points which you could use in in-game stories. Uh, we could kind of think of a functionality like that. Like in terms of trying to have like some point system. It's too kind of early to like, you know, anything set in store in major uh due to the fact that like the main goal is just to get online and then worry about everything else. So it's kind of like in layers. It's like um getting online, setting up a lobby system. So like people could join each other. Then we could work on like clothing, mini games and then everything else. But uh getting like the spaces working first and like trying to get it into a lobby is like the major thing, but somebody said something. We'll we'll be able to make our own music. Um, we could probably think about that, but I'm not too sure. Like in terms of like YouTube videos, if you're talking about like uh custom content and servers, like what I'm doing, you can um, we could probably put that online. I mean, any video could run online. Like if I wanted a 50 cent rap video, I can. And oh my God, I froze. Gimme one second. I have to reload home real quick because I froze. I probably did something in debugger, but um as home is reloading in the background, I will be trying to find uh more pictures and stuff and I'll kind of actually. In the meantime, you could see what I'm doing uh on the screen itself, so I'm going to be trying to find posters and alright, so here. You guys can kind of see home. So in the meantime, I'll have like my main screen on and then once home boots back up, I will uh Alright, so this actually has a lot of nice uh pictures and stuff commemorative goods. Ouch. Let me just cancel out some sites because I don't want um all of this to take over. I'm just waiting for stuff to load up. But what about the emulation scene? Do people still work on that? Um, for the Vita or like PlayStation 4? The emulation scene will always have like a um a popular group like the emulation scene uh for many various consoles will be just fine. Oh, my dev kit is not even on. This is my regular PlayStation 3. Okay, so we got a nice Japanese poster here. My my dev kit sounds like a damn spaceship when it turns on. Alright, so we got some nice photos we can implement for like torsos and stuff. That would be actually a cool ornament. Alright, so that's pretty good. We can use that. I want this actually. And home have launched back up, so I'll kind of keep the screen minimized, but um So in the meantime, while I'm scrolling through all of like 200 plus spaces, um we're gonna go back to the mall real quick unless somebody wants to see anything right now. Let me check back in the chat because I'm like multitasking. Yeah, this is just my regular debug PlayStation 3 that I hacked like way, way long ago. But yeah, tell me if you guys wanna see any spaces, let me know and I could do this because it's probably gonna take a little bit of time for me to uh chatter compile some original uh Sorry, uh if I wasn't talking, I'm just trying to read here like what stuff we can possibly add. Um, okay. Can you show the PSP and PlayStation home? Uh, yeah, I can't switch to that build. Um, this boat I'm using right now is just a 1.86 build, but if you guys really or if you really wanna see the um the older build, I can. I have it. Let me see something for a second. Let me see something real quick. Alright, so I'm booting into like the old home since somebody requested it real quick, but um in the meantime, I'm just working on compiling stuff. So if my screen goes black for a second, don't worry. I am just uh toggling. I'm just trying to check the logs right now just to see if it's booting in because I know sometimes uh home likes to get angry at me when I switch between like a really old client versus when I try to like switch to like a newer one. It looks like it's going fine from logs. All of like the main core files are mounting right now, so Alright, so here's like the old client itself, but um what is this? Earth for, I can't even talk. Earth Defense Force 2 meta. We could do some like tech and stuff. I wouldn't mind uh Yeah, but uh here's the old uh 1.86 client or not 1.86, this is 97, excuse me. I don't even think I have like data. Now I don't even have data saved, but you could see how like home has changed. I think in this build, um yeah, I don't even have clothing labeled per se. This is like an old client that I haven't touched in a while, but this is like when I first started working on uh home. I think you probably remember this DOG. If you, if you're like a frosty. But yeah, this is like, uh, I think this is build dates like to 2008 or something. I don't even remember what I added to this client since it's so old and I haven't like worked on it and God knows when. Ah, snap, I froze. Do we have Lockwood Dream Eye Hideaway? Yeah, we can. Let me uh switch back to the 1.0 client. Let me uh switch back to the one point oh client real quick. Gimme one moment. But yeah, once I. We could go to that, but um. In the meantime, all that is rebooting uh. Trying to like cancel out stuff that I know I'm not using right now. Alright, so. One point eighty six should be on a screen. Let me uh make sure it is on my end. I have a problem. I can't find like any data of PlayStation home, but I think that when I switched to a new hard drive, I didn't back up data, but I remember that I backed up all data like can I like send a hard drive? Yeah, in terms of that, um, you need to dump your EID root key. If you still happen to have your older hard drive per se, you can put your older hard drive back into your PlayStation three, make sure it's the same one, because if it's not the same one, um. It basically will ask you to reformat and you don't wanna do that since you got precious data on there, um. But you could put your old HDD back in and then from there you can uh. What you call it? You can basically donate if the data is there, if that makes any like a sense. Oh, it's not on there, then uh I'm not too sure. It's not the same drive. Was it from like another PlayStation three or something? Cuz if it's like not on the same drive itself, more than likely uh. You won't be able to donate then sadly, which is fine because even I uh I had data that. Went kapoo. Somebody said they wanted to see Dream Island or Hideaway or I think so. This is it? Yeah, this is it. But um after this, I'm gonna go back working on the mall a little bit, or excuse me, a little bit, and then I'm going to uh transition into another thing. But yeah, thank you guys for watching. Thank you guys for leaving a like. I really, really appreciate that. Cuz I think I have like enough, well, not enough photos. But I have a lot of stuff I can kinda work with. So it's not too bad per se. Oh, snap, why I'm a noob character? Damn it, hold on. Alright, so. I see what you're saying, um. Well, you can still donate without um signing in online though, like with the IDPS. Like all you would need is just a new console ID, like the hard drive is not connected to being banned itself. It's like the eternal of the system. Like. But yeah, here is the dream hideaway if somebody wanted to see. I never like bought a lot of personal spaces back on home, but uh I do recall this when I and I do remembering uh it was actually a clubhouse, I believe as well. Yeah, but. I always liked this space. It looked really nice, like even in a debug view mode. I love the whole design of it. It's like very futuristic. It's like. Kinda even see there was like mountains back here and stuff. Probably there's no like textures, I'm assuming. Or maybe it is, but uh, yeah. But yeah, here's Dream Hideaway, but we're gonna go back to uh the marketplace itself. And then, yeah. I didn't buy it. Oh, yeah, I remember that uh the DNS and hey, Gaki. Um. Oh, if you have on your PlayStation three. Oh, yeah, then dump that folder and you can send it to me. So if you know how to copy through Multimind or you could just watch the video. Um, then you can uh send me that via with like Google Drive once you upload it. And then I could take a look at your data. Make sure to do it with USB. Alright, so we're gonna go back to the mall though. Cuz I, we have like enough data in terms of like posters, I believe I would say. Like I do wanna add some other stuff like this poster looks pretty nice. Alright, so we're back into the Japanese mall. We did add the Black Rock Shooter um threads thing, but we're gonna change that poster because I want uh BRS to be via right um here, per se. But I'm gonna uh change this one. So with the new, we're gonna add a two, maybe one or two posters right here. I'm not too sure. Gotta see what the new posters we added. We can add uh this. We could do maybe uh the Little Big Planet joint. Oh, snap. Campus one. Now I wanna do like a boy pro like a one, oh yeah, the LBP one. I want like ones for female and male, so you know, no segregation. Alright, uh. Alright, so now behind this poster, Black Rock Shooter is gonna go away, hopefully. And then we're gonna try to figure out the next set of posters, so one forty one wasn't mapped, one fifty one was that mapped? Alright, so one fifty one wasn't mapped. Uh. Let's make another line. Br dot JPG. Alright, I'm just trying to get this prepped. Okay, so I'm manually having to do this. Alright, so behind me, alright, the these two posters are now working. That actually looks pretty good cuz now it's like you can see here it's right next to the thread section. And it looks nice. Yeah, you could definitely um contact me after uh I'm done live streaming, which shouldn't be too long. But uh you can send me a DM, uh tell me your Discord name and I'll I'll talk to you later and then I could kinda showcase. On what exactly like the team is looking for. Alright, so the Black Rock Shooter poster is now up here, so that's one fifty one. Alright, so I know at least if Black Rock Shooter is there, we could put like another poster there. I don't know, I'm filling the Ratchet and Clank one. We could do like a two toggle poster thing. Aw, man, hold on. Did I? Please say I didn't. We could do like maybe a Ratchet and Clank poster and I was gonna do the other Ratchet and Clank poster maybe since like. Oh, we could add these little pets right here. Let me see something. Alright, that's your ID. I'll actually add you right now then. Uh, gimme one second. Alright, I just DM'd you, so I'll uh you could check that out later. But I'm trying to find uh. Ooh, there's some Final Fantasy stuff. Maybe we could do like, I don't know. I don't even know, to be honest, cuz I'm like, I'm just trying to add stuff on the fly. I may do like Ratchet and Clank and maybe Little Big Planet if they have like a really nice uh LBP poster. But um what I'll do now is try to open this tab. Let me see something. I could kinda make my own LBP poster, to be honest. I just would need something that's kinda. I actually may work, hold on. I may actually make a custom one. I'm going to. I'm gonna open up Photoshop real quick. Alright, actually, we may use this one. I don't know, I'm just giving myself some ideas. We could do some Final Fantasy ones for sure. I'm just kinda having fun with this Nakariki or. I don't even. Alrighty, so I think the posters are fine right now. We're going to, we're going to do maybe Ratchet and Clank. Right here. Trying to. Open a new document really quick in Photoshop and let's see if I could take one of the pictures we just got and I'm gonna resize it and use it as LBP, but I need to figure out the exact dimensions really quickly, so uh. Let me see. Alright, so I gotta find the picture first. Alright, max resolution default that one. Let's see what I could do with this one, so what I can do is stretch it a little bit out. Now I'm going to like stretch it. Let me see how it will look. I mean, that doesn't look too bad. My Photoshop skills ain't that clean. Now that's just look like it's stretching the hell out. Yeah, let me. Back up with it a little bit. I don't know. Let me see. Hmm, that's okay. I could leave that on the side because I think the one that officially came from home looks better since it was like, I don't know. It looked more in depth. But um. What we could do is this actually, uh where is the Ratchet and Clank? Alright, so. Alright, let's see here. So this poster will be not Black Rock Shooter no more. And then I'm gonna go back to, I believe, oh my god, there is a lot of stuff now. Poster one fifty four. I don't even know where all of these spaces came from. What the hell? I gotta delete all of this cuz I'm not working. Alright, so the top poster is working. I gotta fill this poster right here. I gotta figure out this one cuz I want Black Rock Shooter to be here. I think I want Black Rock Shooter here and then I'm gonna toggle out the Final Fantasy one, so maybe like Hoten and Miku for a second, Black Rock Shooter and then toggle back and forth. Alright, so channel forty nine, I don't even know where it's at. Alright, so let me see, one forty nine cuz it didn't say it was there. BRS dot JPG. But we're gonna figure it out now. Okay. Now we're gonna relaunch the space. And the patch itself uh may not actually come out today cuz I will be a little bit busy. But at least I did get some of it done for you guys to just livestream. But yeah, thank you all for just watching like the 17 people, your guys are kinda crazy who and just people who leaving the likes. Thank you for that. Alright, so this. Alright, so. And what I meant by crazy guys is like, I'm saying basically thank you because I I don't know, I feel like maybe this sometimes is kinda boring but. I guess to the end user, maybe not, so that's what like the whole thing is, I know some of the. Livestreams I do is more like developer oriented and work relate, not really work related but. Alright, so we're going to be adding these two. Alright, so 149 should be good. 147 AB, I don't even know what this poster is. Alright, so let me see. And then uh we're gonna test where this one is at. Alright. Now. We're gonna reload and hopefully uh our posters will be up. Oh, nice, oh, you reminded me. I need to test LMOs, which I can do right now. Um cuz that will be in the next patch update, we did get some new LMOs to test. Alright, let me see. So there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 LMOs. So actually, I'll kinda do that in a. I saw the backup threads. Alright, so that poster was for threads. Sorry, I'm just like multitasking like like a. Well, I can't even curse, but I'm trying to multitask as quickly as possible. Alright, so that is done now, so that back. Screen should have the baseball dot jpg, but let me really quickly um create a patch right now for me to test. So according to this, there is, hold on, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, there's 10 in total, um. You are LMOs, one is called Uki. JTTW Cloud. Jack Russell, and I guess why I'm here? I can't create uh create a patch folder for you guys, so what is this? Alright, so. Uh Highland Terrier, I guess this is a dog, I don't even remember cuz I remember picking this out and I remember. Giving it to the offline content team and they could compile this for me. Boxer Companion, but we're gonna be testing these companions very soon as well. Normal Zombie. Chairman Meow, that may be a cat, I don't even know. And a dog, alright, so. But uh let's see if the back of that. Boom, okay, so if you walk upstairs, you'll see the jersey, nice. But right now I'm applying the patch to the LMO, so thank you whoever who reminded me that, I remember somebody said they found a snow LMO or probably was elemental. So actually, right now I will uh reset my console and we can test the LMOs. Um. The unicorn, yeah, the unicorns in here, I believe. Uh but the telepad, I don't think um will work due to Lua scripts and I probably have the telepad, like if I look really, really quickly. What was it called, like Sodium Telepad? But I could guarantee, I could guarantee, uh I can't even talk cuz I'm hearing myself talk in a microphone, but uh. If I type in telepad. Um it's probably got encrypted Lua scripts and that's going to screw me over, so wait, yeah, Sodium Telepad, the first thing I even typed up. Was here, um network sessions though. I could tell by the resource file. Oh yeah, this thing got like four to five Lua scripts. Yeah, I think you can uh for that. So um. I'll even like uh show you like in in a. Alright, so in the meantime, as home is loading, um. You could kinda see here really quickly how. Like you can see here all of the files it's requesting and it's already Lua. I can even tell from just not even the age of this item probably. But yeah, these are probably encrypted Lua scripts, like definitely for sure. Like, let me just even rename it, like I'm just taking a guess. Yeah, you can see here, all of this code right now is encrypted, so even if I rebuilt this item. Home wouldn't even be able to read it, it'd be like, what the hell you giving me? Because it's like it it's not in plain text basically. But um you could probably see from the DDS files maybe, oh. Telvic TM, that's weird. Maybe that's like the company behind that made it. But sometimes from the textures you could tell, uh but you can see here the HKX file has collision or whatnot, but yeah. What I'm gonna do now is uh. Oh, let me kick this off to the screen. Um if we find a way on how to decrypt Lua Lua or whatever it's called, uh you can, but um. Let's go to the crib real quick, just to test out the LMOs that we added. Cuz I was supposed to debug that and um, yeah, why do I keep on getting this ramped? I don't even know why um. I don't even know why um, what am I call it? Alright, I'm back to my avatar. Well, I think even with the Lua, I think it's kinda requesting a key to the server or something of that nature, but um. I'm not too sure, uh the team hasn't looked on it like too much because um we've just been focusing on online. Alright, but we gotta figure out what the hell um. LML or excuse me, LMOs, we gotta um check, so let me look at the names of the LMOs. Alright, so. Chairman the Meow Cat, I guess this is that one. Alright, so this is one of them. So it's just a cat that follows me around. Alrighty, so yeah, you can see the cat. It looks cute, I like it. But that one works. Now what's the other one? Uki, I don't even know what the hell the Uki. Bruh. Boxer Companion, was that in there? Okay, so that was the one that. Oh, that's a big ass dog. Alright, so the dog actually like slowed me down a little bit, I actually wanna see something, I wanna see if the dog could run as fast as me. Let me see. I can't even see it. Oh yeah, the dog can't really keep up, I mean, he does actually cuz they're like, I think it has like a teleport thing to me. Alright, but uh. So uh. Jack Russell. Wait, I already checked the the dog, Forsaken Plan, I'm just trying to see because things are not in order, so I have to like. Oh. Jack Russell, yeah, that's another one. Oh, this dog is smaller. Let me see. What does he look like? Yo, send some hearts in the chat for some dogs, if you if you guys are animal lovers. I like I like this one. Alright, so three out of like four or five are working, Gribbler the Dragon, what the hell is that? Trying to see. I'm trying to find that one, Gribbler. Where the hell is that? Is this it? No. The hell is this? Puppy Dog, oh, that's the Puppy Dog, well, I found that one at least. Bruh, see how home be trying to like finesse you with the like cuteness, you know people were gonna buy this. Like they could have priced this thing at like $50 and somebody was gonna buy it, like home knew what they were doing for uh marketing. I don't even know what this dog is based off of, like it's just like some small ass pup. Alright. And thank you guys for the likes, thank you guys uh for tuning in. Is this online? Uh no, this is the offline client, but the online client is still being in the works. Like that's just the main focus for the team, I'm on the developer one or development offline build. Alright, so. JTTW Cloud locomotion? Wait. Boxer Companion? Beast Mount, Sky Serpent, that's not it. See, that's just kind of like the boring part of like me testing it. Because if something's an issue or something's wrong with it, I have to come back and like uh fix it. Hi, do we have anything dealing with Highland Terrier? Yo, there's a lot of dogs, so a lot of people when they were playing home definitely bought a lot of dog LMOs. Alright, so yeah, he wags his tail, he's moving, let's just see if he moves and follows me, okay? Alright, so. I'm trying to find. I don't know if I could like take the LMO and try to attach it in real time, but uh. It wouldn't even matter because I need to check the object uh catalog. Uki, oh no, I remember this, that's from uh Pika Vox. Like you could use to battle him and Pika Vox ninjas as well as Pika Vox uh monsters. So Uki works. Alright, I just need to find. Forsaken Cow. Yeah, the no, I know people was probably spent like, people claim they spent like $2,000 on this game, a thousand dollars, 30K, like. Some crazy numbers, I'm like, bruh, people were putting like life more life insurance mortgages on this. I need to find. I don't even see the other stuff. The cow? I don't even know. There you go. I remember the cow. There was one you could ride to, this was from uh that space, I can't remember, Loot Space Station? The infamous space, yeah, we could take a look at that really quickly. This would actually be a good test to see if my locomotion uh. Come through like in another space, the mini games works in uh infamous as well. The abandoned docks. Yeah. The DNS codes, yeah, I remember DNS codes being out and people were getting free items that way. There were like a couple of DNS codes. Back on home. But yeah, here's the uh infamous uh lounge space or. Just loaded up the mini game. Oh shit, my aim is trapped. Okay, you see the aim, you see it? But yeah, you can see like uh infamous game has been. Yeah, I remember IGA, I had it. Oh snap, I can't aim that. But yeah, some of the stuff are like the mini games won't work because it's like requesting stuff from the uh server. And then uh I know that requests some stuff in the server. How are you getting to play PlayStation Home? I'm running a offline development client. Okay. You can see here like the file where the game would actually be, whatchamacallit? Like that IP would actually launch the game itself. But um, we could go to one uncharted space and then I'm gonna plan on going back to the mall since that's what I was originally trying to work on, but. I'm finding A B C D E F G H I J K, okay. Just had to make sure I know my alphabet because sometimes I'll be. Off. But uh, yeah, we could take a trip to uh, I don't know, Uncharted 2 Nepalese Village. Yeah, sadly the DDR dance floor as much as I want it uh, to work cuz that's like one of my favorite spaces and one of my favorite mini games on home. It has encrypted Lua, so this is really not that much we could do. Alright, so I'm just waiting for it to load, but um, in the meantime, I can uh. Go back to my PC while that is loading and I can uh. Attempt to find more uh, posters and try to replace it. Alright, so poster forty, one forty is. Alright, so I know the space loaded. But yeah, here's one of the charted spaces, the Nepalese one. I never used to go to the uncharted spaces, but uh, I do like this one though. This one looks pretty nice to me. And uh, the mini game works for it. And you could see like the leaderboards, um, if of course, this was offline or online. You could uh, you know, use the uncharted spaces. But yeah, you can see here. The village itself. Oh snap, there's like a whole village down here and a couple. It's probably not mapped, it's just uh. Outer bounds. Textures. Do we got the playground? Yeah. Um, and who asked a question? I'll do the playground since it's one more, but. Then after that, I'm gonna go back. Uh, but who? Are you working on this alone? No, I work with a, a team. But yeah, here's the playground. I was actually here in the start of the uh, screen, but that reminds me uh. All of the posters and stuff will be getting replaced. For the PG. Yeah, but uh, basically like, I'm the only like, one of the main developers that worked on the offline side of things, but I also work on the online client as well. Like I flip and flop, I do both. Plus I do like all of the YouTube um, whatchamacallit, like the advertising, the streaming and all of that stuff. Yeah, I remember RTM Tools and uh, I G A and all of that stuff. I used to mod home back in the day. One more? Alright, I mean, you know, I'll do it. Watch Park, Adam. Y'all probably talking about um. Whatchamacallit? Acorn Meadows Park. There's so many parks on home though. Uh, yeah, trust me, when I say online is being worked on, take my work, uh, take my word on it. There's just no ETAs because y'all guys have to understand, right? Basically it's like a team of like, I don't know, four to five people, essentially. And we have to rebuild everything from scratch, so that means setting up a lobby server. We have to set up like the stores. We also have to like, get all of the in-game metadata. We have to stress test the servers, we also have to, you know, think about security. Because of course, you guys know, PlayStation Home was hacked from like day one. People were freezing servers and everything like that, and unfortunately, we already know that possibly some people. Are going to try to like, freeze servers again, they're probably gonna try to mess with, you know, the content server and we are trying to not implement that. So there is things that has to be in place before we launch like, an official online release. Plus there gotta be, you know, some checks and balances, rules and you know, regulations on that. Uh, but yeah, here's like the nighttime version of Acorn Meadows. This was like the fourth of July one. Yeah, none of the games are working with this one since uh, it's a way too new space. But um, the space itself works, but any of the mini games are encrypted sadly. But um, I'm gonna go back to the mall so I could fix this up, or get like generally a lot fixed up. But yeah, when it comes to online guys, I don't wanna be like, oh, it's coming out such and such date and then we don't hit that deadline per se and then everybody's like, oh man, you lied to me. Thus, that's why we, we're ETAing too. Uh, it, it deals with like, reverse engineering online, like it's not just like we can. Change some numbers and some DNS settings and we're online, there's like, way more to that. That's why I work on the offline client, so at least some people could get a feel of home, or you know, that's why I livestream, so you guys could kinda see. Like the progress making into offline, because we could translate that progress into online. So it could take online years. Um, as of right now, I think we're in a good state. Like, I'll honestly say that to you guys, like. Um, I don't have any, you know, ETAs, but and when it comes to like, years, I mean, it can. Because you gotta understand, reverse engineering isn't like some easy feat. We basically have to recreate a server from scratch and. God forbid, you know, that takes custom coding, that takes like, once again, like stress testing and all that stuff. Plus adding on all of those items, like you gotta imagine, right? You see all the content I did alone in the offline, now imagine I have to try to manage that for multiple people and make sure everyone's downloads are okay. And you have to understand on top of that, like, you know, we're doing this out of our free time. Like I work on home on my free time, like, and I also have like, you know, outside, you know, I have a personal life, I have to attend to, I have school, I have all this other stuff. As such as the other people who I'm working with, so it's not like we could always work on this four hundred percent twenty-four seven, but we're trying our best to. Work on online, so that's just something, you know, people gotta understand, and I don't mean to say that to be like, mean or anything, it's just the reality of things. Yeah, I mean, like progress, there's always progress being made off the scenes, like I may never like announce it. Yeah, PlayStation Home actually got me into the modding scene and everything else, like PlayStation Home like low-key kinda changed my life. So. What I'll do here is. Yeah, like dude. Bruh, you could see like, from the first. Time, like we weren't even able to run any of these spaces. Now I'm sitting here in the mall, and live in your face, trying to fix posters. Speaking of posters, I need to fix uh. Same thing, like at one point, if you guys remember just watching my other videos, we went from like no clothing and now you have like almost all the clothes. Well, that's the thing. In terms of like, whatchamacallin', oh, I do uh. Online schooling, but uh. In terms of whatchamacallit. Wait, somebody said something. I'm trying to like read the chat, my eyes are kinda getting droopy. I haven't really slept that well. Um. Yeah, home actually did change like. My life a little bit, it wa- it was like a fun thing for me to do as a teenager. Yeah, I love home due to like fashion, like, there were people that would like, spend. Bands on just clothes. Alright, so threads, alright, so that poster right here. Alrighty, um, okay. So that poster will be like the campus uh, one that I just put. Screen links in Namco R K Center is working fine, except that one poster I still have to try to figure out, but in terms of mods, we're, we're trying to do, like. We don't mind people glitching for online, but like people who wanna like literally try to freeze, because the thing is, right? There won't really be no point to modding home, because we're, the goal is, is just to have everything for free, so there really wouldn't be like. A reason for you to mod, like that was the whole point of modding back on home was to get free items and other stuff, but. Like in terms of like freezing and any of that, we're gonna try to patch it out because we want people to have like a fun experience, we don't ha- wanna have like a toxic. Community, cuz if you guys remember towards the end of the home mods, um, maybe it was fun for some people were using it for like malicious reasons. And stuff, so. That's like a big issue, like, I don't wanna see like a community, like if I have, like imagine if I have to log on home right now, or like, let's say if it's online. And I gotta deal with people, instead of like fixing the servers, I may have to deal with people uh, trying to freeze or like D-Dolls or whatever. That's not really fun for me or the Destination Home team, cuz imagine we do all that work, just so people could just freeze and like start drama, like it's not cool. So there's probably like moderation we're looking into and uh, other stuff like that, but um. That's like, it's just some, something I do wanna state right now, that we are looking into like whitelisting even, like, just to avoid any toxicity. But it's too early to tell, like, but that's just like my personal opinion, like I don't mind people doing like harmless glitches and like trying to get on top of a building, like it ain't hurting nobody, but like. People who are like trying to freeze and like, you know. Do that stuff, cuz there ain't no reason, cuz all the clothing gonna be free, all the L M O's are gonna be free and everything of that nature. Cuz that like killed the whole like aspect for a lot of people, I mean like. Alright, so this one right here. B R S dot J P G. People used to freeze in wardrobe too though. If you had a lot of clothes. But yeah, thank you guys for tuning in, I really appreciate it. The stream been going on for two hours, I, I can't even believe it that I've been streaming for this long. Um. Okay, so I actually got what I want. Uh, these posters are supposed to be here. What I'm gonna do now is take the Blackrock Shooter picture and I'm going to uh, put like a Final Fantasy one, cuz that's what I want. So, bruh. I gotta find the Miku one though. Okay. So I found the source to one forty-two. Alright, now. Alright, so. I really wanted to do the Japanese mall, I wish PlayStation Home with PS4. How do you have a freeze? Yeah. I mean, oh, I know who you're talking about, Pool's Clothes, KFC? Yeah, I know him personally. Well, we're good friends. I haven't talked to him in a while, but I, I definitely know who Pool's Clothes. Why people were freezing? I don't know. Uh, just to, I don't know, mess with people? Wait, where is it? Alright, so it is toggling. That one is at least. Okay, so both of them are working. Now we gotta get the backend for this one. I gotta freeze. Oh, let me see. I was about to say I gotta freeze, hell, hey, what? Hold on, I ain't trying to freeze. Freezing is annoying. Alright, so one fifty-three is done. One forty-three? One thirty-nine. One thirty-seven, one thirty-six. One thirty-five, one thirty-four. Okay, so I have all those. One thirty-two? Yeah, we got that. Uh, my head, looking at this, kinda hurts my head sometimes. Um. This is just requesting uh, Commerce Point stuff, so that's not really viable. Change lobby to Home Square, Destination ID. You're gonna, yeah. How do I do this though? Trigger to Home Square, Action Change Lobby, Destination ID. That's the Destination ID, um. Let me see something. I'm about to, I'm about to try to figure something out. I'm gonna try to import this to the Japanese Home Square. I don't know, hold on. I don't know if this will work this is kind of me just being dumb right now low key alright so let me reload I'm actually going to see how uh I'm gonna try to actually look at my theory and uh work from there alright so technically if I walk through this door I should go to home square no it takes me to harbor not too sure why probably cuz I don't have it like edited correctly let me see cuz I wanna I never actually done it because I know it'll be easier sometimes to just walk to another space type of stuff home square alright so change lobby game space see it's just like what destination ID see this says cinema this says game space bruh I don't know I could probably figure it out later but I I thought me just typing the command ID would actually like uh it maybe doesn't like it because it has like the Japanese name though I did save it though so I'm not even too sure hey 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 yeah KFC he plays on PC now is there gonna be any trophies for PlayStation home um if we get the 1.86 client working then yeah but um what you might call it the 1.86 client has the trophy file called MPWR 050 and that's the client um that's the client that supports trophy supports but you could actually mod your trophies it would be mad if they bring a platinum trophy for home they already had trophies for home but they never um what you might call it they never had a platinum like if you do a quick search like I already know the original folder name or like the development name to the folder let me see yeah like you can see here oh this site's in a oh actually let me look at uh PSN trophies PSN profiles is a good example I'll pop up the screen so you guys could see I know I'm doing like a multitude of things but uh the cool thing about home too um there are two trophy folders one is for a development that never released and uh let me pop up the screen so you guys could see alright so y'all guys should be able to see my screen you can see here where it says zero percent zero owners this is the development trophy the one where it says 220,000 people uh actually played the trophy itself or like basically 220,000 unique users played only 30% beat it or basically earned the gold trophy I remember the gold trophy was basically take 50 pictures and I remember doing this on home or I forgot which one was the hardest though it was that yeah or no no it wasn't taking 50 pictures it was visiting places at home on 50 different days so basically if you played home 50 different days in the year which I did um yeah but you could see here that even two years ago people are talking about PlayStation home and people were like sad that like these trophies are um basically gone you could hack them of course and like there's a method on how to do it which isn't too hard but uh it's just pretty cool to see like you know home had trophies at one point yeah they did even in the um online client will request trophies that boot for sure but um I'm trying to fix these two last posters really quickly or I don't even know how many posters we need to do cuz I finished that one I finished the back one here I did this one the states one is now done alright so that is done those two are done that is done just trying to make sure alright this one is a blank one right here alright so off topic but does anyone know the jailbreak on PlayStation 4 16 or 6.20 6.72 that exploit um you could read more about this like the news on it I did a video on it like literally four days ago let me see let me just type this in really quickly but yeah there's a new exploit that's coming out to the PlayStation 4 here I go copy link address so if you wanna watch this out yeah you could check out my thing you could get PlayStation home trophies uh what you might call it but let me uh take this screen off and we're gonna go back to the PC alright take care thank you for the live or checking out the live stream I am trying to uh figure this out cuz I don't know where scene 19 video screen marketplace estate screen one do we have that maybe no we don't okay well uh uh look at all this code that I need to or the script that I need to clean up alright so right here I'm gonna add that command clean that up I'm going to go to my source files where I have all the pictures um alright so oops I just hit my keyboard alright right now let me just reload home the memory is fine for this space like I have a bunch of posters and it's not what you might call it if I get hold on oh I'll watch this in a second if I get my firmware on my old outdated PS4 is that install uh currently there isn't a official jailbreak out it's just there is a 6.72 kernel exploit and right now um as the days go by developers in the PlayStation 4 scene is currently making a kernel exploit for um the actual firmware so all of like the payloads and stuff are getting exploited in terms of like modding the PlayStation 4 and getting online I'm not too sure about that and I really don't think online will be a viable option due to many reasons uh like due to Samu which is like a system processor that basically runs all of uh the security for the PS4 but um I'm keeping in touch with the PS4 do I know a developer named Tempest Fire yeah I do also remember um glass walls and some other like all you run up from EU where is the photo I posted I really don't know hold on yeah the PS4 the benefit that everyone is wanting for 6.72 um is to play higher firmware games that's like the main thing that everyone basically wants so like back on 5.05 which is like the latest firmware only like games like God of War and lower could get played so anything like Final Fantasy uh 7 um Kingdom Hearts 3 anything newer um was basically not used and oh there go the picture okay there is an estates picture oh I was like what I don't know ah that stretched out the image too much let me see from cache data we can add something trying to see if um I don't know cuz that's like a really weird size that uh the store will have hmm not too sure how it could cuz I'm I know this particular data I'm looking at has a stuff from globals I can look at would eat these let me see if there's anything else profiles wouldn't really matter because I can't hmm I could try to data mine right now and look for old stuff so I can probably look at estates and put a big picture right there cuz I know there is a photo if not I could put something custom but I really don't wanna put nothing custom I'm trying to restore like the originality to uh home itself cuz I was like where is that photo so what I can do now is uh screen 110 market space 2 is that the top screen here I'm assuming maybe that's the top screen okay so I'm going to try to look at really old Japanese links using wayback time machine and this is where I'm like getting a lot of my uh original footage from and I'm drawing I'm trying to see what I can do alright gotta take heat of memory cuz I don't want like memory out issues alright so this is the top screen and bottom screen so we at least know uh uh I don't know his uh original PS name hey yeah this particular uh this is the Japanese marketplace that I'm trying to restore so that's why I'm trying to give it like an original uh Japanese oriented thing yeah Japan home was cool alright so let's see if they have any like uh I wanna see if the posters are kinda like I don't know hmm I can't come up with something let's see let's see what I could whip up I can like put posters side by side maybe but um we can do 1280 by 640 I mean that doesn't seem like it but I think it will be able to resize alright so what I'm gonna do is open up Photoshop really quickly and I'm going to uh find my source folder where all my work is at and I'm just gonna work from there so let me just drag this to the side alright so I put that like right there and we where is this stuff I just downloaded I don't even know where the other stuff is at I could kinda like set that up uh and that's like alright well that doesn't look too bad alright so holy snap I gotta scroll through like a thousand folders alright so marketplace I'm just gonna call this test PNG oh snap I just oh and I have that key function on right now I can have it both upstairs and downstairs I don't care alright so we're reloading Japan home so those two posters I whipped up really quickly on uh Photoshop should be just fine but thank you all for the you know love and support that you guys showed me uh you know from the 17 people who are watching from all the likes thank you I really really appreciate that but um I think it's taking some time okay there I go that doesn't look too bad that actually looks like an official poster and I whipped it up in like 20 minutes even though it like somewhat came from the content server at least it looks way much better it looks more full you know like I don't know looks better in my opinion I have to fix the bottom poster but I don't know the ID to it so I manually have to um let me see something okay so 110 was the screen name I think that's it though this is odd I'm missing the screen name though and I don't know what okay let's kinda put our heads together for a second so Granzilla this one goes to Granzilla this one goes to I'm trying to figure out this picture that corresponds with this okay so Jeezy Lagoon But I need to know the CNID so hopefully it's the one that's like adjacent to it or like parallel I guess alright Screen name one forty-three now Let's see if there is a So one forty-four is these back ones one forty-three or forty-three I should say There's there um one forty-one Please be a one forty-one or a forty-one if when I look back in here And this will kind of tell me Ah there is a forty-one So I don't know which one this is Uh this is gonna drive me nuts So if that's one forty-one what the hell So hmm let me let me let me let me backtrack for a second Alright so poster one forty-three I wanna look at that more because whatever that is Market no no market poster six B right if that's six B then what is six A Six A is one forty-two But that's Hot Ten Miku So wait if this is six A I'm trying to understand this cuz this is like the hard part Okay So six A is this so what is Blackrock Shooter that's what I need to figure out and then reverse from that That's one forty-four okay now I need to figure out what corresponds to one forty-four I'm getting close I feel like Seven A so what is seven B then and that should tell me Hold on One forty-five maybe this is it Ah we found a car plate it was one it was a Alright so I had to do my critical thinking skills so one forty-five was that cuz I had to work backwards So if that was one forty-five um Now what the hell image I wanna put there haha You could put this one I don't even care And actually what I'm gonna do is have another Jeezy I'm gonna have it double toggled so actually this will be uh Oh four And then I gotta find the other Jeezy and I'm gonna call it a Photo image So If my calculations are correct these screens will toggle as well as the back ones And this is me testing now and then I'll be done with them all Alrighty so right now if everything is correct Our posters should pop up like just fine Please don't tell me I missed a line of code Bruh what did I do I don't even know what I did Uh Let me see something Okay something's off but I think something got Let me see I think I have solved the issue And let me boot up the logs and it will kinda tell me which is uh lying or What why is this poster not showing it's like this one doesn't wanna be live for whatever reason oh man What did I did do what did I did differently to not have this one working It's even weird it's like this one is not even like getting connected like I could like I don't know Was it like a bug on home or something I don't know I have to do more investigation but you know what overall and like The Mr. Two Hours then yeah uh when online is coming will it be region free of course yeah um I could tell you this now uh we're not gonna put any region locks because A that would take too much time and B I do want people to experience uh other spaces and home but uh yeah if you have any questions uh feel free to ask me But yeah uh region shouldn't be even an issue like The way how online offline runs and you could see how I could go to like for example me just going to Japan home it's not setting me flags it's not saying hey I'm not uh you know from this region I'm not gonna allow you I couldn't go to a Japanese space So first question is do I need PSN patch or PSN Ninja to go online Uh I use SNE enabler when I go online for the safest method via on custom firmware That's what I uh usually use but PS patch you can but uh I just prefer SNE enabler I feel like it's more safer personally But yeah I think I'm done with the marketplace uh I've been live streaming almost three hours and I think after this I'm about to wrap it up and get something to eat but Hopefully this patch will be out for you guys maybe later on I'm not too sure it will be this week for sure Is PlayStation home gonna be online and offline both Home will be on online that's what we're currently working on now um And that's just the major priority for the you know the team is to get a online client working that's just been our mission statement But uh the offline client is something that people could play with In terms of a release there's no ETAs and Just to sum it up what from I stated earlier I'm a dude with reverse engineering and there's no like official way we can just say hey It's come it's not like a regular game development release it's not like we could say hey it's coming out uh August blah 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 Are they gonna be online and offline well yeah you could play the offline client now If you're in a destination home server there's already builds you can play uh but uh for online Um it will just be online and it'll work for official firmware custom firmware systems debug and uh Hen But um let me make sure that I put this in the patch Since I don't wanna like lose all my work and I don't wanna like reverse what I accomplished today So hold on Alright so those two folders are definitely gotta be inside the patch folder Uh man hold on I don't even know where I lost my place okay environment I have to slap that in here I'm creating a patch for you guys now So when I do this later on You're doing more work than Nebula team they haven't update since May will it work on official firmware online yeah Oh and in terms of online yeah there will be updates like just how I'm pushing offline updates Um we could push online updates to the client and it should just anytime you access the server it will basically uh Be already auto updated per se Just like how home was like anytime if we have to like do any changes or fixes um there will be via in the online uh client Or I mean basically just like any other game patches like just how you would download patches from PSN we could Do that for CFW essentially we can even release package files or just like package updates that could be pushed to your system That's not hard to do at all cuz um other developers have done that But yeah guys I think I'm going to uh What you call it I think I'm gonna be wrapping it up real quick since I did up hot today Um I did get to fix something I really wanted to do which was the Japanese market um I wasn't even expecting to do that I was supposed to be doing pixel junk but clearly I fixed it a long time ago and I didn't recall it But um yeah next live stream I don't know um it PlayStation home is something about Mirror's Edge like a mini game or a map Um there's nothing about Mirror's Edge on home as far as I recall maybe there was some items but I don't recall ever a space But um you could see here guys uh you know we did or you know I did this uh you know posters for you guys so you guys could uh You know check this out once I installed the patch there's this one um thing I have to fix is this bug on this poster but I'm gonna do it off camera But yeah But you hope you guys have a great Sunday have a great weekend or you know weekday I should say and Whenever I live stream I know I do it randomly um You if you guys subscribe to me and y'all hit that notification bell you you will instantly know when I start live streaming And I usually wait about like four to five minutes so people could join in but thank you all for watching thank you for the support um If you guys I recommend joining the destination home community server if you wanna learn more about home and like the progress online As well as offline of course but yeah I am signing out y'all guys have a great day Um next live perhaps maybe Monday Tuesday I'm not too sure it depends on my schedule Cuz I usually do a random but I'm signing out for real this time yeah guys take care